The meeting of the June 22, 2017 Planning Commission is now called to order. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. Madam Secretary, do you have a quorum for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for a member to serve as chairman for this meeting only.
I'd like to nominate Darrell Tipton.
Set. Move nomination to be closed.
Okay, nominations are seized.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion to close has passed. We'll now take a roll call vote for Darrell Tipton to serve as the Planning Commission Chairman for tonight's meeting. If you would please just state Mr. Tipton's name after Marlene calls your name on the roll when you're asked to vote.
Bennett.
Darrell Tipton.
Brad Bowers.
Darrell Tipton.
Sean Carter.
Darrell Tipton.
Ron French.
Darrell Tipton.
Roy Gamble.
Darrell Tipton.
Tom Hodge.
Darrell Tipton.
Bruce McClellan.
Darrell Tipton.
Clifford Walker.
Darrell Tipton.
Okay, it's unanimous that Mr. Tipton will serve as tonight's chairman of this meeting, and this is for tonight's meeting only. I would recommend that your first order of business in next month's meeting is to elect your vice chairman, so that I don't have to be here to do this. Not that I have anything against any of you, I just don't like doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good meeting. Darrell?
Thank you. Madam Corky, you did an excellent job.
Thank you. Would you like, do you know how to operate the night?
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Changing of the guard.
The reason I'm serving tonight is our chairman, Estucky, could not make it, and the current vice chairman, which we had, is no longer on the Planning Commission, so we're out of a vice chairman for the time being, so that was a reason for the procedure that just occurred. Okay, we've had roll call. We need approval of the minutes from the May 25 meeting. Have we had a chance to review those? They should be in your packet.
Go move it, Chair.
Set.
Have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, can't have a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. We have a public hearing and possible action on rezoning request from R1, that's rural District 1, to C, which is a commercial property located 10-125 Chapman Highway and 302 Pickens Gap Road. I've resumed, Doug, that's a year. Tom, would you help us out with that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I think you need to open the public hearing for this.
I'm sorry?
I believe you need to open the public hearing for this item, and then I can present the case and go from there.
We'll do that. At this time, the hearing for the public is open, and for discussion on the rezoning request I just read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick synopsis of the request. Currently, the property is zoned R1. It totals approximately 11 and 1/2 acres, and it's two adjacent tracks, and they are adjacent to, they're immediately adjacent to the commercial corridor on Chapman Highway. Although there is no direct access to Chapman Highway, the smaller of the two tracks has been developed with about an 8,000 square foot garage building that houses Trailers Incorporated business, and it has operated on this site since about the mid-'80s. The larger of the two tracks is undeveloped, but it's also used by Trailers Inc. for overflow storage, et cetera. Access to the larger track is off of Pickens Gap, and it does have a gated driveway which allows primary access only through, currently at least, only through the other Trailers Inc. property. Several maps attached for reference, and I believe the applicants are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is open. Anyone that would like to speak to this rezoning, please stand, be recognized, and come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Item 5 is public input on items on the agenda. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak to items that we'll be talking about tonight? If so, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, so on the last item, there is the possibility for an action. If the commission so desires, they can forward this on to the County Commission for public hearing and vote.
So you want to send it on tonight?
If you all want to make a motion to that effect, and if the commission voted that way, then we would be directly.
I'll make some motion. Thank you.
We have a motion to send this on to the County Commission?
I'll second.
We have a second, okay. Any discussion from the body?
Yes. Were neighbors informed of this possible rezoning and so on?
Yes, sir. So, at this point in the process, we post the property with signage, which has been up for about a week and a half now, and the notice of this public hearing was posted in the newspaper, excuse me, in the newspaper. The next step before the County Commission involves mailed notice to adjacent properties and properties adjacent to those properties, so that would be in the next step.
So you haven't heard any objection to it at this time?
No, sir.
Any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular piece of property is over on the edge, at the edge of my district. I'm familiar with the piece of property. I was familiar with the previous owner. He and I, I've known him, he and I have been good friends since before he even bought the piece of property. His original property was in Knoxville Stone Road. He came and bought this piece of property, and since that time, back in, I thought it was the late '70s, early '80s, he has used those two pieces of property as commercial pieces of property. And as stated in the agenda tonight, the first piece of property, the smaller piece, has been used for tractor-trailer repair. And the second piece was used for the overflow when they didn't have a place to store anything until they could get to it. I'm also familiar with the current owners, and his son and his wife. His son, I can remember him going to work with him, I think, when he was about 16 or 17 years old, so he's been there forever. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm speaking out in favor of this. I think we need to send it forward and rezon those. Thank you.
Okay, so was the motion to send it to the commission with a favorable recommendation? Is that, was that the motion?
I said.
We have, we got a second on that already, yeah. I just wanted to clarify what the motion was. Any other comments? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? All in favor of sending this rezoning forward with a favorable recommendation, let be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, now we're ready for public input on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to any item on the agenda at this time? Hearing none, we shall move into the agenda. We have a site plan at 3028 Old Niles Ferry Road. Doug, is that something you're handling?
That's me, that's me too.
Tom got that too, okay.
This is the last one for me, then we'll move on to Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Vapcon has applied for a building permit to construct a small prefabricated garage on the subject property. It would be going into an existing gravel area on the Mint Road side, so this is a corner lot. The garage would be used to securely house a medical transport vehicle. Since this is a non-residential use, before we can issue the building permit, the site plan has to be approved by the Planning Commission. I have a few other things in the staff report, but primarily, I think, Section 715, it requires that at least 50% of the wall surfaces that are visible from public roads to be non-metal. The Vapcon has agreed to side it with hardy plank, and it would be in a complementary color. And so, as a bit of clarification, originally, this was a house, and this is in the suburbanizing district, so it has a residential feel, as does everything else, and this, the garage would be a residential-looking garage, so I think it would blend well. No concerns for environmental health or stormwater, and staff recommends approval.
We have a recommendation from staff to approve this site plan. Do we have a motion?
Go move it, Chair.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion from the body on this site plan? Hearing none, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of recommending the site plan, let be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. We move on to concept plan. We have done preliminary plats, major subdivisions. We have renewal of preliminary plat on Griffiths Mill at Mint off Choder Road by Country Meadows Corporation, 138 lots, 166 acres to be served by proposed U. County roads. Tom?
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
We got Doug this time?
Yes.
Well, so far, I haven't got it right yet.
Over three. It's okay. I've got 10 items on the agenda, so I'm going to try to move us through all these items. I guess, I don't want to be rapid, but I'm going to just move through them. If you have any questions, please stop me, and I'll address them right then. Preliminary plat for Griffiths Mill, it's actually a renewal. Griffiths Mill at Mint off Choder Road by Country Meadows Corporation. The preliminary plat you're looking at on item B1 shows 138 lots on 166 acres to be served by proposed U. County roads. The original preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission in 2005. The bulk of the infrastructure was put in for the first phase in those years, 2005, '06, '07, '08. There was a couple renewals, and then the economy changed, and the property went back to the bank. It sat with the bank for a couple years, and then Country Meadows Corporation acquired it around 2012. They brought it back with the preliminary plat at that time, and that preliminary plat was for 24 months. It has since expired in 2014. They're simply asking for the renewal of preliminary plat again. The reason that the preliminary plat you see hasn't changed, the lot design has changed a little bit, but the roads and infrastructure has not, and nor do they intend to change that. All the roads that you see will eventually be put in basically where they were on the preliminary plat, but some of the lot, the lot design has changed. And having said that, I'm just going to read the outstanding items to be completed. And they begin on the bottom of page 6. Number 1, supply legal documentation regarding the management and operation of the onsite sewer system. This has been previously provided by the owner. Number 2, all drainage pipes and drainage basins shall be inspected and approved for final plat. Since this project has sat for a few years unattended, we have checked those again, and everything seems to be functioning fine. Any new lots for future phases, that we'll be discussing in a minute, will require a certification from a project engineer. Number 3, that's kind of just what I mentioned, all roads, drainage, and detention facilities must be certified as being built in accordance with the project engineering plans that were originally submitted, and we'll talk about that here soon. Number 4, the developer shall supply a copy of a property owners association to include all lots in Phase 2 for the maintenance of all common areas, including drainage facilities and open space. And this last item, number 5, road signage and painting along Choder Road and internal has already been done, but I wanted to keep those items consistent with the original preliminary plat. That's all I have.
Do we have any questions or comments at this time from the body?
Motion to approve staff recommendations.
Is there any comments or questions? We do have a motion and a second. I don't want to rush you, but if you're ready to vote, we'll vote. Question's been called for. Do we need to call the roll on this? Or a vote spot? Okay, all in favor of the preliminary plat, let be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Item 2. Lots 1, is that 1 through 3, or just 1 and 3?
We're on item C1.
Yeah.
Final plat.
Mm-hmm.
Number 1, Griffiths Mill at Mint Road. Griffiths Mill at Mint off Choder Road, Phase 2.
I'm sorry, you're item 1 on that.
Item 1, C1. We have 19 lots served by county roads. If you'll look at the plat, item C1, you'll see what I was just talking about in the last one. You just renewed the preliminary plat in the last item, B1. And item C1 shows a series of new lots along the Boulevard entrance, and it looks a little bit different than it did on the original preliminary. And that's not uncommon from preliminary to final plat, especially when the infrastructure hasn't changed, and all the infrastructure's already in. So I just wanted to point that out, why those lots are along the Boulevard, whereas previously they were shown, the previous developer had intentions of putting all kind of common facilities down there that never came to fruition, so they decided to use this area, actually put lots in. And I'm going to just do what I did last time, and I'm going to read the outstanding items into the record, and if you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, before you start reading, Doug, am I on the right map, C1?
Yes.
It says lots 1A to 21A?
Yes.
Are those 21 lots instead of 19?
No, there's two lots that are.
I'm trying to.
There's two lots that are going to be, they'll be developed later.
Oh, okay. I'll count it, 21, that's what I just.
There is 21, but you see where 18A, 19A, and 20A are?
Yes, sir.
We should have actually had an updated plat that didn't get in here, but that's just going to be one lot for now.
Okay.
And they're going to put the common driveway in later.
Okay.
So that'll go from 21 to 19.
Okay.
Outstanding items to be completed are on page 9. I didn't explain this very well, I guess I should go back. Number 1 is a consideration of a variance by the Planning Commission regarding the new regulations for common area ownership and maintenance. We changed the regulations, I think, in 2015 for common area maintenance, that each lot shall have a share in the ownership of detention facilities, and that went through a process of, I think it went all the way to the County Commission and then back to the Planning Commission. The variance would be that since this subdivision has 55 lots, and it was done the way that was approved previously, the way we've always done it, and then we changed the regulations, I'm recommending to the Planning Commission that you grant the variance to allow the property owners association to stay the same for all the new lots in the future for this subdivision. Otherwise, you're going to have a property owners association that has a maintenance regime to take care of common facilities, and then you're going to have a whole new set of lots, and we're probably going to get about another 100 lots total, and they're going to be set up on a whole different system, and the subdivision's not going to work well together. So the variance would be just to allow the property owners association to maintain the common facilities the way that was originally set up. I could probably say that two or three other ways, but does everybody understand that? I'm just going to move forward then. If you think about it, have some questions, please let me know.
Do we need to put that in the motion, or will that just be part of the motion? Is it already in the wording, or?
Let me back up and just read number 1 again, and then I'll just go down the list, and if you have any questions, we'll address it again. So number 1 is a consideration of variance by the Planning Commission, and the variance would be to that section on the maintenance for the common areas. The developer shall supply a copy of a property owners association to include all of the lots in Phase 2 for the maintenance of the common elements, including drainage facilities and open space. Number 2, all drainage and detention facilities must be certified as being built in accordance with the project engineer, engineering road and drainage plans and specifications prior to final plat certification. I don't believe I have that yet, but it should not be a problem, because these drainage facilities were all built for the number of lots that you see here. Number 3, the lot owners shall contact the Highway Department prior to any construction for new driveway entrances. Number 4, final signature plats with certifications from all utilities, 911 and Highway Department, and a $40 per lot plating fee prior to final plat being signed by the secretary. So if you have any questions, I will try to address them at this time.
Okay, will entertain a motion?
Do we, now, we're, in this motion, we're not, we're not putting lots 19A, 20A, and 21A as part of the motion, correct?
The lot number doesn't matter, it's just, this is going to be 19 lots in the final plat. Phase 2 will contain 19 lots.
I'll make the motion subject to the staff's recommendations.
Does that include the variance?
Including the variance.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, now, we'll have discussion.
I apologize, I normally would have checked this before I got here, but does Little Nine Mile Creek not have a flood hazard area at all? I didn't look, check the FEMA maps.
If it's not on here, I don't believe it does, Kevin?
It doesn't approach on those three lots there.
It did?
Does lot 1A, 20A, it's all on common area, little line action area, it's all coming in that side.
Okay. Is that, then?
It did show on the report plat on the previous plat.
Been a while since I've been out there. It is a two-lane bridge?
Yes.
And one other probably stupid question, but lots 3A through 9A have got to make a right out and make a U-turn, correct?
Yeah, that's not uncommon for a Boulevard road. I would like to mention, since you brought it up, the bridge was actually repaired, it was a one-lane bridge, a little more than one lane, but it was, that was part of the original approval, they had to fix that bridge, and that was back in 2006, I believe.
Any other questions? Yes. I've got a question or two for Doug. All these houses are on a centralized septic system. Does each house, I know that each house has its own septic pump, are they maintained, if one goes out, maintained by the property owners association?
No, it's not a, I mean, you can call it a septic system, it's actually a sewer system.
Right.
And it's maintained by a public utility. I believe it's.
Is there an easement for these new proposed lots to get to that proposed drain field septic system?
I don't know what you mean by an easement, but yeah, they'll all get to that new system, yes.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the approval subject to the recommendation of staff? I believe that was the motion. Let be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, item 2 under C, the lots 1, is that 3 lots or 2, Doug?
It's lots 1 through 3.
So it's 3 lots?
Yes.
Okay. Off Valley Vista, lots 1 through 3, of Valley Vista off Cloverhill Ridge Road by Pancras Construction. They all have county road frontage.
Yes.
Tell us about them.
Yeah, last month, you approved a preliminary plat for 15-lot subdivision. There were some conditions that they worked with the Highway Department and have a contract to widen Cloverhill Ridge Road. They intend to do that, I'm not sure what the status of that is, but our regulations allow up to 4 lots total off of the existing road, and that's what they're doing here with Phase 1, so they've got the 3 lots, and the remainder would be considered the 4th, and the remainder being what they intend to use for future development, which will contain the next 12 lots. Outstanding items to be completed are on the bottom, start on the bottom of page 11. And number 1 is the construction of pond number 2, which will actually be contained on lot number 3. There's a little tiny pond area that has to be actually constructed, and a certification letter from the project engineer. Those items, we've already addressed, it's not constructed yet, and I've not got the letter, but it's a very, very small area. It's basically putting in a pipe and starting the construction of the common driveway that will go on that easement. So I don't want the final plat, it's something staff can handle administratively, we'll go out and inspect it. When we get the letter from the engineer, we won't release the plat until that time. Number 2 is to supply a copy of the maintenance agreement for staff to review. And number 3 is signature plats with a site distance easement to be located on the plat, which I see it's on here, and a $40 per lot plating fee. So once again, if you approve it, subject to staff recommendation, or outstanding items to be completed, I'm sorry, we will hold the plat until the detention facility's built, certified by the engineer, and the property owners association actually has these 3 lots established to maintain that. That's it.
Do we have a?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to add, I've been in correspondence with Mr. Pancrats, and we have agreed on a number. We are at the Highway Department getting all our paperwork in order to do this going forward. We've never done this as far as the contractor paying X amount, but he's been in contact with me, and we should have all that in place by the end of next week, so it's in the works. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations, correct?
Correct.
We have a second?
Aye.
Second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Eyes have it. Now we go into a.
We're on item E1.
We have replat, yes, of Guthrie Suite property off Big Springs Ridge Road.
Yeah, four lots off of a shared easement. There's currently three lots. I know it's kind of hard to tell on here, but they're taking three lots and turning it into four lots. They're using the existing common driveway, and it's in good shape. There's nothing that needs to be done, other than the outstanding items to be completed, which are on the middle of page 13, and there's only one, and that's the signature plats, including utilities, and a $20 per lot plating fee. That's all I have.
Do we have a motion on the replat?
Motion to approve, based on the outstanding items to be completed.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion now? Bruce?
No, Bruce second.
Second, yeah. We have a motion, second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, I presume we're ready for the vote. All in favor, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
No, it's like so. Eyes have it. Item two under E, re-subdivision, track 14, the Lindsay Estate off of Lanier Road by Amberman Builders. Four lots with county road frontage.
Yeah, there's actually three lots with county road frontage. One's actually served by an easement, and that's lot 14R3. Outstanding items to be completed are on the bottom of page 14. The lot owners shall contact the highway department prior to any construction for new driveway entrances along Lanier Road. And number two, signature plats, including utilities, and a $20 per lot plating fee. Before you make a motion, I just want, this does look like a common driveway development, but there's no improvements going in at this time. We have something in our regulations that says that if you have one lot only served by a common driveway easement, you don't have to put the infrastructure improvements in. They don't have to put the common driveway in now. So basically, lot 14R4 has road frontage, so we don't count that lot at all. So there's only one lot being served by the easement at this time, and they may come back in the future and re-divide, which is the developer's option. So I just wanted you to know why it was being approved the way it isn't.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion made, but Bruce second. Who did the second? Now, any further discussion? Motion was made, subject to staff recommendations, of course. All in favor, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three, James Carpenter Estate off of Mint Road. Four lots, three lots with county road frontage, one lot served by an easement.
Yeah, see, outstanding items to be completed are on page 16. If you look real closely at the plat, you'll see lot number three is a corner lot, and it has a little area that we've marked for the driveway location. The driveway would be located in that area only. Number one pertains to that. There's a removal of a section of a fence on lot three for site distance. It's actually just the end of a fence. The fence goes toward the road. It doesn't run along the road, so that end piece just needs to come down, and then we'll confirm that. Number two, the lot owners shall contact the highway department prior to any construction for new driveway entrances on the county road. And number three, signature plats, including utilities, and a $20 per lot plating fee.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a question too when you get to it.
Okay, we'll have the question after the motion.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Okay, Bruce.
Where is access to the remaining lands of James Carpenter from, is that from another road?
Yeah, from Shadowwood Drive.
Shadowwood, okay.
And that is a county road.
Any other commissioner? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the approval subject to staff recommendation, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item four, Montgomery Meadows, lot one through 14 by Travis and Robin Luke, off Old Niles Ferry Road, Nine Mile Road, four lots along the county road.
Yeah, in your packet, item E4 is behind E5. Not sure how that got that way, but it is. So if you look behind E5, we're actually looking at E4. You have three lots on Non-Mile Road and one big track off of Old Niles Ferry, so we're all looking at the same thing. Outstanding items to be completed are on the bottom of page 17. Number one, the lot owners shall contact the highway department prior to any construction for new driveway entrances. And number two, signature plats, including utilities, and a $20 per lot plating fee.
We have a motion by Commissioner French. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bennett. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval subject to staff recommendation, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item five, Rodney Murphy Property off of Highway 411 South, three lots along the state highway.
Yeah, if you look at the plat real quick, they have a rather large easement, 50-foot easement going down the center to the track three in the back. I'm pretty sure the intention is to re-divide that, and you'll probably see that in the next couple of months. At this time also, they are going to access lots one and two off of that easement, which I think is a good idea to limit access, even though that's a five-lane road. The less conflict points we could have, the better. So they've agreed to do that. Outstanding items to be completed are on the top of page 19. Number one, the owner shall contact the TDOT for a driveway permit, and since there's no construction of a common driveway at this time, we won't require them to show that to us, but they'll have to confirm it later if they put a common driveway on it. Number two, a maintenance agreement for the shared access. So since they're sharing that access, I think that needs to be done now, otherwise it may not get done. And number three is signature plats, including utilities, and a $20 per lot plating fee. And that's all I have.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, based on the outstanding items to be completed.
Okay, second. Now, do we have any discussion or comments? Did you get that motion second? Any comments, any questions? Hearing none, or we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion as stated, subject to the staff recommendations, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Miscellaneous items. Right-of-way acquisition of Bernie Lee Road, section of the David Lee Wayne Lee property relocation of right-of-way and abandonment of right-of-way.
Yeah.
Kevin, excuse me, please. Kevin, would you care to stay for just a minute? I'm in new business. I want to, I've got a question. I'd like for you to be here to help answer.
As long as you don't charge.
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
We're ready, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, it'd probably be best if we look at the plat together. Miscellaneous item one. Is everybody on there looking at it? This is simply a road plat. Road plats have to go to the planning commission. The purpose of this road plat, originally, Mr. Lee was going to divide off that series of buildings and houses onto a piece of property, and after some debate about right-of-way and so forth and so on, we came up the idea of relocating the intersection of Bernie Lee Road and Big Springs Road and making it the safer intersection, actually bringing it down at a 90-degree angle next to his property. So we've had discussion with the highway department and Mr. Lee and the surveyor, and the subdivision part has essentially gone away for now. It'll probably end up being a five-acre track, which will be exempt, but he still agreed to give the county a new right-of-way to make that intersection a lot safer. And if you can actually see the road now, it's actually labeled, "Old Right-of-Way, to be abandoned and pavement removed," and it's next to a long barn, and comes down at not a very good angle, more like a 45-degree angle, where it intersects with Big Springs Road. Okay. When we have a road plat typically, it's usually a no-road section. Like when you have a subdivision, we approve road plats all the time. In this case, there's just no lots. So he's proposing the new right-of-way to come through on Bernie Lee along the entire section of his property. So he's giving, where we currently have basically no right-of-way except the road, he's giving 25 feet on either side of center, and then he's realigning it with Big Springs Road. The highway superintendent's here and has agreed, in theory, to this idea, provided that if we get out there and there has to be some changes, or there's some major problems with construction in that area, that we can either realign it or go back to the old road right-of-way. So we need that caveat built in there. The direction that we go from here is, the planning commission needs to make a recommendation to the county commission to accept the new right-of-way. That's shown on this plat, okay? And then, once that is approved by the county commission, we can get all the signatures on the plat and record the plat, then the highway department can actually physically go out there, do the engineering, and make the road improvements. Once that is done, they can close the old section and abandon it back to Mr. Lee. So I think it really only takes one action by the planning commission, and then that would be to move it forward to the county commission for acceptance of the new road right-of-way, and then everything will occur after that. Once the new road is built, even if it moves a little bit, once the new road is built, we can rerecord a plat if need be, and then the action of abandoning the plat would be through the county commission from the highway department, but would not come back to the planning commission.
But the county commission will have to approve the abandonment of the whole road right-of-way.
And they'll accept this new right-of-way as well. They'll do both actions. You're only required to do the first, as far as I understand.
Okay, we will not be a part of the second action.
Correct.
Once we take an action tonight, then it will move forward without, but we're going to be making a recommendation to the county commission to approve the new roadway.
And we can't make any improvements until that's done, because we can't work on that property until it's ours, or until it's the county's, excuse me.
Well, excuse me, but Mr. Trigson, will you be evaluating the suitability of this prior to the recommendation to the county commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As Doug said, I don't have a problem with it moving forward, but until we do our due diligence of identifying, could there be rock there, so on, so it's a great plan here on paper. It works. It makes it more safe, but I'm not going to sit here and agree to, we're going to build a road, use the taxpayers' money, and we hit rock and the price triples. So when we research it, we feel good about it, we'll hang our hat on that. But I do agree, we should move forward with it because it does fix an unsafe area.
Okay.
But yes, we need to make sure we've done our homework before we say we will reconstruct this road.
Okay. Anyone else have questions of the superintendent?
Yeah, how much road are we talking about, Jeff? Linear footage.
We're talking about 340 feet.
It's not that much.
340. It's real small.
Yes.
But it does pick us up right-of-way, an unsafe area to pull out. It gets it squared up. So it's, on paper, it does look good, but we need to do some exploratory work of soils and where we should, you know, we may need to move it 20 feet, 30 feet. It may be good where it's at, but we would be remiss to say, hey, we're going to do this and something go wrong. We do need to move forward, but we need, as Mr. Hancock said, the caveat of saying, we found something that's not right. We could move it, or we could walk away. I think we need to have that right reserved.
A couple more items, too. We don't get these offers very often from the public to make this type of thing happen, so thank you to Mr. Lee. He was very gracious and very easy to work with. I think he understands, too, that, you know, based on the condition of the property, it might be difficult to build a road in there. I think he understood that. I wasn't disagreeable to that.
He understood that.
Yeah, I think it needs to move forward. We accept the dedication of the new right-of-way before we spend a lot of money doing engineering.
That's right.
If it doesn't happen to work out, we can give it back to Mr. Lee. But the second part of that as well is if we don't accept it now, I don't think he'll make this offer again, because he intends to sell this property within a year, from what I understood.
I would agree with that.
So I'd say we accept it, and then if we have to back out, I think he'll take this property back.
Okay. Well, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move it to the, send it forward to the commission.
Commissioner Walker makes a motion, second. Commissioner Bennett?
No, it's not an option. We're accepting the road right-of-way. We're not even at that point, so it's, but we did have a conversation with him, invited him to this meeting, and he was really clear that he felt we could handle it without him being here. He just said, go do what you need to do to make this happen. Like I said, he's very agreeable at this time.
Yeah. A very unusual situation, but very gracious on his part. We just need to make sure it works to the benefit of the taxpayers and not the money paid.
We do have a motion. We have a second, but we're open for any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, brother?
Just to clarify, we're going to accept the right-of-way, but that does not mean we're going to build the road. That'll be subject to your determination later.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor of this proposal on the right-of-way, have been over saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Okay. Get down on the discussion section.
We are on item, miscellaneous item two, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, would you like me to move forward with that?
Is it possible for me to ask Kevin something real quick, and so we can move on? He can get out of here, or is that?
It's up to the chairman.
Is that okay to do?
Is there any? Is there any objection to, from the body to allow Commissioner Walker to ask? Is there any objection to, from the body, to allow Commissioner Walker to ask Kevin a question at this time? Kevin, would you please come up?
Thank you, Kevin, and I'm sorry to disrupt the meeting a little bit. But my question is, we have a lot of subdivision or developments coming in where we have three and four lots off of a common driveway. And I've been wondering if we come up with some kind of relief to the developer to maybe put a one-way road in and so that it gives them some relief for more lots and a relief on that road, if we might help the developer and help also by having less driveways coming into the roads.
On private easements or on actual public roads?
On private easements, right. So, that if we've done one-way roads through there, that we might catch more lots and give them more lots on that right-of-way and have less driveways going on to public roads.
So, one-way road would be more lawful?
Yes, yes. I mean, is that... What would be involved in making some kind of a resolution like that? And is it something that's worth discussion? Does anybody else see an advantage to that over having as many driveways as we're...
Can I address that?
Yes, please.
Before we get too much into this. The subdivision regulations currently allow for a one-way road with a reduced right-of-way. So, that is an option to developers already.
So, it'd be a public road or a private?
It's a public road. Our current common driveway standards allow for four lots. What I heard you say is allow for more lots. Common driveway is a gravel road situation. We have a private road, which is a, you know, a little bit of a higher standard gravel situation that we still allow, believe it or not. So, a common driveway is limited to four lots. And there's a lot of reasons it's limited to four lots. The main reason is a 10-foot-wide gravel road only needs to have a certain number of houses on it. Otherwise, it becomes problematic. So, then we jump up to a gravel road standard, which is 18 feet wide, private road. But then the lots have to be a minimum of five acres in size unless you do a cluster development. Then we have a standard road option, an uncurved road option, and a one-way road option that we don't talk about very much at all.
What I'm concerned about is having so many developments on those roads. And that's becoming, seems like, more and more popular in the county. And it's that are we really benefiting from that? Do we need to look at it and make a change and do something different that is going to allow a developer of property or those large, you know, pieces of property that they might get 12 or 14 lots instead of having four or five driveways onto the public road? Can we reduce that? And that's what I would like to look at and see what we need to do to maybe relieve ourselves a little bit with our restrictions that gives us a better benefit in the long run for the community.
We have several current... Okay, at one time, we allowed four lots on a common driveway. It didn't matter how big a piece of property you had. We only allowed one common driveway per development. And then, the idea was, we have this option for common driveway. Why are we prohibiting or telling a developer he can't get multiple common driveways if his design is good and if he still has drainage engineering and other considerations? If he meets all the other conditions, why are we limiting him to one common driveway and four lots and forcing him to put in a paved road in another situation? So, the County Commission finally said, you know, hey, in certain situations, it might be cost-efficient for a developer to use multiple common driveways to achieve the same thing. But there's still a limitation to four lots per common driveway because it's such a substandard drive. It's a substandard road. It's 10 feet wide. You can't pass a vehicle very well. Now, you're talking about going from four to 12 or 15. With... And I understand the idea. Now, I don't have a problem if you have two side-by-side and you loop them. But to make them one-way also, a 10-foot wide drive should be one-way. But our common drives are not. But just keep in mind, these are gravel. If you start making common driveways of 10-foot-wide gravel one-way, then the first guy that lives on the front of that driveway, they're going to have to take all that traffic every day from 10 or 12 lots instead of four. And it's going to be one-way traffic. So, everybody's going to have to go one-way to go to their house in and out every time.
Okay, currently on a paved driveway, how many lots can they get off of a driveway?
If it's a common driveway, they can still only get four.
Okay.
Unless they can go to a higher standard.
So, what I'm... My thought is, if we improve that road, that driveway some, and the developer can put a little more money into that driveway and make it one-way, but yet get more lots off of it, and the situation would be better for the county, would be better for the public, and be better for the developer.
But it still needs... One-way roads have certain problems because people don't always drive one-way on them. And our paved one-way road is 14-foot wide at a minimum. It's not 10-foot wide. So, you've got 14 feet, so you're going to have to have one or two feet of gravel shoulder on either side. You're building 18-foot-wide of gravel before you pave it anyway. So, you know...
So, currently on a paved road, a private driveway, four lots is all that someone can get?
Well, we get four lots. We don't count the road frontage lots. You know, if it's a flag lot, I mean, we have situations where...
So, we end up with 12 or 14 or 15 lots anyway. And we have all these driveways. So, to me, it's like, why, you know, what are we doing to create all these driveways and have them cut the land up?
I'm not sure what you mean by all the driveways because every house has to have their own driveway, even if it's off the common driveway.
No, I mean, the easement's going on to the public road.
You're talking about the private easements.
The private easements.
It's two easements now, or you have one one-way road. You still have two intersections with the county road. It has to come out.
If we up the standards for the private road to something bearable to a developer where they can get more lots on that private road...
That's up to the Planning Commission.
So, that we have fewer entrances on the public road.
You're going to have just the opposite request that you're getting now, whatever they may be. When you do that, people are going to say, "Well, now you just increased the cost. We want low-cost common driveway development."
Okay.
I think that...
We've spent enough time on it, but maybe... Thank you, Kevin. Maybe we need to, I mean...
Maybe Commissioner Walker, maybe you can get with Doug and y'all hash it out and come up with something we might look at.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's talk about the discussion of Section 8.06 Doc. 1 curbs of the subdivision regulations. Now, is this a public hearing on that matter?
No, no, sir. You have what we came back with as our recommendation moving forward to the Planning Commission. This isn't something that goes to the County Commission. It's just the Planning Commission. We have... I don't know if it's in the paper yet, but you sent the advertisement for the public hearing.
So, if I may, real quick. At last month's meeting, I recommended, if at all possible, let's make this the public hearing tonight.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the TCA, it's a 30-day notice required for this. And it's been less than 30 days since our last meeting, so there was no practical way to do it. But what we would ask for is after the discussion tonight, if you all are so inclined, we have the paper ready to publish a 30-day public hearing notice for next month. So, if you all make a motion tonight, it would be to direct us to advertise for the public hearing at next month's meeting.
And this information was based on... We've been working on the curves for quite a while, okay? What I took from the last meeting was direction to write an actual proposal. And that is, the proposal contains what we're taking out of the regulations and what we're putting into the regulations. This is complete, and this comes with several years of work, meetings past that, and recent meetings with the Highway Superintendent and the entire Highway Department to get to this set of recommendations. If you want to do any changes on it, which you're allowed to do, it may push that public hearing back further. And that's up to the Planning Commission as well. If there's any urgency, though, I would recommend that you gave staff direction to write your proposal, and we used all the staff. So, this is our proposal. We are open to suggestions, but I think it's good the way it is. And the Highway Superintendent's here as well to speak to it. We came up with, we have five curve options. We have five... Sorry. We have five road options that have to do with county road sections... Curbs for county road sections. And I could go through them all, but they're all in here. I think we supplied this to you about a week ago. It's similar to what you saw several times. We have... I'll just go through them. Option one is the curb that we currently have, the one that has caused so much consternation with the development community because of costs. It's a fully mountable curb that does not have to be cut. The second curb is a stand-up barrier curb. It's just the same kind of curb you see basically everywhere you go. It's almost at a 90-degree angle to the road surface and channels water. But the purpose of that is more of a barrier. That's why they call it a barrier curb. The third one, we're calling the Blount County in Maribor Modified Curb. The drawing might be a little bit off, but it's basically the curb that they use in Maribor quite frequently. And every community has their own curb, so they don't have any objection, as far as I know, that we use their curb. If they want us to change the name, we will, but they didn't seem to have a problem in the past. The fourth option is an uncurbed section of road that we've had. And, you know, we allow a road to be built without curbs, and then you have shoulders and ditches as the option to move or channel the water. And then, the fifth and final option is kind of a catch-all. And let's see... Where did it go? Yeah, it's just an alternative curb design and to be approved by the Highway Department. And it gives them discretion to sit down with the developer based on road type, you know, particulars of the property, topography, drainage considerations, any number of situations where an engineer might say, "Well, we would like to do this kind of curb." And it may be for financial reasons, it may not. But it gives the Highway Department the option to look at it and say yes or no to that idea. And with the idea that public safety comes first and their ability to maintain that new curb or replace it in the future, all of that's written in here. And it all piggybacks on this new, and I mentioned it several times tonight when I read it, read the outstanding items to be completed, is this idea that developers now need to contact the Highway Department for their connection with county roads. We didn't have that before. And it's kind of like a, it's kind of like a curb-cutting permit, but we're not really sure yet. We haven't... It hasn't been labeled that. We just call it the driveway construction entrance process. And that allows the Highway Department and anybody who owns a lot, they're responsible for contacting these guys before they do any damage to a county road when they build a new driveway. So, this fifth option kind of gives the Highway Department the ability to use that new set of regulations or policies they're using in concert with this regulation and look at curbs on an individual basis.
Okay. If I remember correctly, from the last meeting, this body was pretty much ready to go with a public hearing tonight if we had gotten, if we were in position to do such. I guess I'd like to hear from the Superintendent as to what his thoughts are. Do you think we're ready to schedule a public hearing at the next meeting? And then we'll kick that around for a second.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It's been very well thought through. We've had several meetings. Gives developers options. You know, if they still want to do the curb and gutter at a higher point, that's their choice. But the options we have put in here are options that are safe, economical. And the biggest part for myself and the Highway Department is we have the ability, when damaged, to go fix these other options. Curb and gutter, other than forming it, taking up a lot of labor and time, we don't have the ability to fix that curb and gutter. So, guess who absorbs all those extra costs? The taxpayer. So, we're keeping our product safe. We're channeling the water. The Maribor curb, as we call it, it's tried and tested. It's all over town. So, we just, we feel like it's a good move to give options. And if they come with a different style of curb, you know, we'll... Obviously, we want to hold the right to say no. If it's something that's going to go back to this curb and gutter that's labor-intensive, so... But all of these are very good, sound options.
Okay. Can we have a motion to...
Chairman, I move that we set a public hearing at... How much time do we need? 5:15 or 5 o'clock? Before the next Planning Commission meeting?
We could just open it at the beginning of the meeting, couldn't we?
Well, all right. I move that we set the public hearing for 5:30 on whatever the next Planning Commission meeting is. Marlene, do you have anything handy that...
We have a motion by Commissioner French, the second by Commissioner Walker. Now, open for discussion. If anybody's got any real issues with this, we'll talk about it.
I guess maybe not the time to do it, but my concern was the same as Clifford's. But what I would like to see, I think the reason why we've gotten so many of these is we call it the cost. And if we give a builder another option, like the one on Nels Creek that had three or four at least joint permanent easements, they could build one with cul-de-sacs at the end and, you know, it'd be a public road, not a private at these type like this. We don't say on this plat, but in NOS County, they make us say it that that's not a county-maintained road. If those people on those gravel roads have problems, they can't go to the county. They've got to do it, worry about it themselves, those four to six people that are served off of those. But I think if builders are best given the answer whether they would be willing to build a less expensive curb and road to possibly serve more and maybe shorter roads, too. So, that'd be something at the public hearing, I guess.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, that next meeting is Thursday, July 27 at 5:30.
So, we're well within timeframe then?
Yes, sir.
Right time?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, let's have a vote. All in favor of scheduling the public hearing? Let me number saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We'll schedule it. Do you have any long-range plan, any staff reports?
No, sir.
No? Any other reports of officers committees? Do we have any other new business?
Can I just say one thing before we go?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I think Clifford brought up, you know, another talking point. We have other issues. I mean, I'd be glad to sit down and talk to Clifford anytime or anybody else. But I don't know, you know, I mean, Bruce had a couple of comments. You might want to think about having a work session to discuss some of these items so we can hash them out instead of doing them in the middle of a meeting.
I'd like to sit down and talk to you and maybe Bruce and I can talk some about it and maybe we'll do that.
But I think we have some other items in the subdivision regulations that have been poking their head up since, you know, this time last year. Maybe we can think about a work session before summer's over. Just want to throw that out there.
If you do that, I'd like to see a kind of a detailed outline of what you'd like to discuss and not just be totally...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest that once they do have their discussion, that maybe we do have a work session and get several of our heads together because we may have some questions. My first concern would be access to emergency vehicles, to some of those. It could, you know, a matter of seconds in an emergency situation could save lives. And if you're dedicating one entrance to that emergency vehicle and there's 15 or 20 houses on that road, if it's on the end of the road, that could cause some problems.
I agree with you, but when you've got five or six entrances and that vehicle takes the wrong entrance, you've got the same issue. vehicle takes the wrong entrance, you got the same issue. So, you know, I mean, that's, if you got, if you got five driveways coming on to a public road, and an emergency vehicle takes the wrong one, then you have the same issue.
I've been with the emergency service for quite a while, and that's not much of a problem, Clifford. I just, it's just...
Mr. Chairman, once again, these are the kind of questions that come up over and over, and I think a work session would be the probably better place to hash these things out, because we can, we have these conversations all the time, and they pop up, but we can't just change regulations.
Right.
And then, we come back a year later, and we haven't changed anything.
Right, you have regulations that you have to go by.
Yeah, so I would, if we have a work session, we can invite other people and get some other input. You know, it's been a while since we had one, so I wouldn't, I think we should have one.
Let's get through the next meeting, and then maybe we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any public input on items that were not on the agenda? Do we have anybody here that wants to address the commission? Hearing now, I think I'm ready for a motion to adjourn. Where adjourned?